Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know, they get all the attention.
I'd like to welcome all of you to the Tiverton Budget Committee, or the School Committee, for whatever today is, January 23rd, 2020. Anyone, have any of you signed up for open forum?
There's a second.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
May I ask that we remove, sorry, I'm not up there yet.
Want to make a motion to remove something?
Can I make a motion to remove, item six?
Okay, all those in favor removing item six, approval of minutes of the 1:720 regular and executive session? That's item six, right?
No.
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Oh.
Do we have to do it like that?
Subcommittee, oh, okay. I'm dealing with my...
New glasses?
No, old agenda. I don't know why this agenda is different from what you guys have.
Is that minutes perhaps you're looking at?
No, never mind. All right, others in favor removing item six, subcommittee reports?
We've got a new agenda like two minutes later.
I'm pretty sure I downloaded it.
I raised my hand, did everyone?
What did you?
So the motion was to remove item six, which was the subcommittee reports. And now we have a live motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, so vote now?
For approval of the consent agenda.
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Sankiony? There is nothing on the consent agenda. All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to move up item 13.
You're going to do six, don't you?
Right.
Six first?
I simply wanted to make note to everyone that there are no policy subcommittee meetings in your packet, and that is because they haven't yet been completed, and I wish I had told IBIS to remove it from the agenda, because I hadn't. I will submit them for the next meeting.
Okay, can you not hear?
I've been sick, so my ears are all deaf.
I'm going to ask everyone to speak up for the audience. Okay. All right, so... I'm going to ask for a motion to move up item 13, old business FY '21 budget overview.
I'll make that motion, second.
All those in favor? Okay, Dr. Sankiony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I think this is a good way to start tonight's meeting, seeing you have three detailed budget presentations coming up following this, so to give you the overview of where we stand, seems prudent to start. So that being said, as we started constructing the FY '21 budget in October, meeting with all the administrators in the district and getting feedback from our staff and so forth, we decided that this year's budget would come in just basically meeting and maintaining what we're currently doing. And so there's a number of bullets there to sort of encapsulate what I just said, but the important thing about this budget is there's no new request for staffing, there's no new request for professional development, for curriculum, for anything. It's really a level staff budget, we're asking to basically just continue what we're doing this year, moving it forward one year with just our fixed and mandated cost. Some background information, some historical information for you to consider as we try to understand this budget here. So here's our enrollment, and you can see that since 2014, it's somewhat dipped a little bit, and then you see it starting to pick up again next year. And so we get these predictions from an organization called Nezdeck, and they look at three critical factors to determine enrollment. They are a birth cohort, so the number of births as can be predicted in a community, and those students as they're rising to school age, the number of home turnover, so they look at homes that sold within the community, and if they have a number of bedrooms, they try to make predictions on the number of students that may come with that. And then lastly, they look at new homes, new homes that are going to be built that again have more than one bedroom, which sometimes there's a formula to determine how many children come with that. So with those three factors taken into consideration, you can see that starting next year, there's a slight trend where Tiverton starts to recapture and grow a little bit in population. Again, these are predictors, but it's a formula that every, almost every community in Rhode Island that Nezdeck services uses to try to predict their population. Some other background information, give you a look at the residential tax rate. So the orange bar is Tiverton's tax rate in 2018, the red bar is in 2019, and it's arranged in increasing format, so I know the years are displaced, but the understanding here is that Tiverton was the only community in Rhode Island that actually dropped their residential tax rate from one year to the other, and you can see it's still in the middle there, so you can draw your conclusions on, you know, whether the tax rate is high or low and so forth, but it was decreased, and that's certainly a positive trend. Here I want to show you per pupil expenditures, so apples to apples, every community or every school district in Rhode Island reports their per pupil the same way, and you can see here that Tiverton is sort of almost in the middle, and certainly suggests that no one is overpaying for education in Tiverton, but that education is supported. Some other information regarding this budget, so based upon the budget request I'm going to show you this evening, if in fact we were to achieve that request, this is how it would be spent. So the orange and the big, the light blue category, that's personnel, and it accounts for 75% of the budget request. That other darker blue square, what's labeled other purchase services, which is 18%, that's for transportation, out-of-district programs for special education, our special education assessment, and insurance fees that comes to the district. The other small squares are everything else we do, but this certainly suggests to you that the money that we receive, we use for personnel, people make the difference in our field, and we're certainly showing that with this budget. So if you train your eyes on the two biggest parts there, that 75%, this next pie chart breaks that down for you. So if 75% of the budget is spent on staffing, then in fact, 65% of that 75% is for teachers. The next largest category is power professionals, then you have administrative assistance and custodial, followed by administration. So again, we're using our budget, we're using our revenue for direct classroom instruction, people who interact with our students on a daily basis. So with that as sort of a background, as we examine the FY '21 budget, the budget that I'm about to present to you, I think it's important to have a deep understanding, or at least a little understanding, on FY '20, the budget we're currently operating in. So you can see the figures that are up there. Our budget is, I'll use round numbers to describe it, 33 million. The town contributed 31.9, and to balance, you made the decision last spring to bring in Medicaid funds and fund balance funds, and you can see the two amounts there, but what that created, that creates a $1.1 million structural deficit, using one-time money to balance, you don't have that money to come in the next year, it sort of compounds itself a little bit, so I want to make sure you have that understanding that we're coming off an FY '20 budget, really 1.1 million in the hole. So here's where we start FY '21. So we're looking at that same number from last year, where we start at 31, again, I'll round it off, 31.9 million. I'm suggesting to you that the budget you may want to request includes a 4% increase in the town, which we know is the maximum. That state aid right now is predicted to come in at 298,829, which would allow the budget to increase by 1.2, almost 1.3 million. So it would come in at $33.1 million. Now, when I started this presentation, I said to you that the budget we're seeking is a level service, level staff budget, not adding anything. So just to do that, we need 34.9 million. So the highest the budget can be increased is 33.1, we need 34.9. There's a deficit of 1.7 million, and I'll explain that deficit as I continue to go through the presentation here. As you heard me say earlier, 75% of our budget is staffing, so here's how the staffing breaks down. To extrapolate staffing, just from the '20 budget, it was at 17.7 million, it's being increased by the following factors, the COLA, which is fixed and mandated in our contracts, step increases, which are fixed and mandated in our contracts, substitutes, again, a fixed cost, longevity of fixed costs, and other raises for other non-union personnel, another fixed cost. So that's what drives up 75% of the budget, and it's a 5.9% increase. Again, I want to accentuate the fact, this is nothing being added that's not fixed and mandated. The other part of our budget, the other 25%, are all of our expenses. So our expense budget, budget to budget, 15.2 million, 15.3 million, moving up to 16 million, it's an $813,213,000 increase, 5.3%. And that 813,000 increase is driven by these following factors. So special education, out-of-district placements and the assessment, held dental insurance premiums, retirement contribution, unemployment insurance, transportation. So every lineup up there is fixed and mandated, other than the technology at 94,000. So again, I want to again promote that this budget is really moving us from one place to the other, exactly as we were this year. Outside of the request for our operating budget, I would present to you, you have a detailed list, and at our next school committee, we're going to get into a capital presentation, but right now, having sat with all the administrators in the district, out of that five-year capital plan, we're going to suggest to you that these are the following items that are the highest priority for us. So continuing with the bathroom refurbished at the middle school and the high school, front steps at the middle school that are dangerous right now, siding and power washing range where we have some problems with mold, outside mold and things like that that need to be repaired, that's going to become a much bigger problem. An interior door at Fort Barton, it's becoming a security issue for us, the post repaint and windscreen, that's the tennis courts at the high school, and it's again, one of those things you want to take care of now, well, it can be fixed at a smaller cost than rather seeing it escalate. We have some, we have a lot of kitchen equipment that's failing throughout the district. And then lastly, I'd suggest to you the purchase of a van, and that van alone, if we use that to offset some of our special ed transportation costs and some of our athletic teams traveling after school, we could offset that 75,000 immediately by just three or four runs and recapture that money right back into our budget in one year, then years moving forward. For example, I'll give you an example, we spend $72,000 a year to transport four kids to a program in Barrington. So if we take that, if we do that trip ourselves, we're going to pay for that van, and we, you know, start using it for our athletic teams, say for small teams like maybe the tennis team or some of the other teams, and do some of those transitations where we're paying almost $300 sometimes for a round trip with buses, you know, it would solve some problems for us, and it would be a wise investment, so.
We'd still have to pay for gas insurance.
Right, right, there would be other factors, gas, insurance.
Exactly, yes.
Salaries.
So that shows up in our transportation line, is where those costs?
Well, they don't show up yet.
No, not the savings, just now where it's existing.
Yes, yes.
So who would drive the money?
That would be another cost we'd have to figure out. But I, what I would, I guess espouse to you is that one trip alone would save us 72, and then you start adding on the athletic trips.
On your way to paying.
So maybe the first year, you're a little in the red on this, but the year after and the year after, it's just straight savings. So it's just something to consider.
And I know that was one of the reasons they changed state laws to allow this, they did allow you to have smaller vehicles.
Yeah.
A lot of people asking for that.
So that's capital, and again, not this school committee meeting, but the one after, we'll get into the entire list, and if you want to manipulate it, if you feel that other things are more important, we certainly can dialogue with you regarding that. So I want to pause here now, and again, you know, say that this year's budget, we know that the town stepped up and sort of funded it at a higher level than they had done in the past, and I want to talk about, you know, return on investment, and say to you that, you know, our goal is to make sure that every student graduates from Tiverton High School in a timely fashion. You can see that we're starting to chip away at that, and you know, from '17 to '18 to '19, there's some incremental growth there, and working with the guidance staff here in the administration here, I think 2020 is going to be even better than, it's going to be into the mid-90s percent. So we're seeing growth there, and I want to promote that as a long-term goal for 100%. But also talk about that, again, you invest in your schools and we can produce results. There's no doubt in my mind that this, this district, you know, can be a shining example here in Rhode Island. So some of the things that have happened here this year, Tiverton High School was placed on the 2019 AP District Honor Roll for expanding opportunity, which means offering more AP classes, but at the same time, improving performance. I'm supposed to hang the banner in here for me? Maybe they hid it somewhere, but if you see an AP banner somewhere, it's here. Other things that I want to point out, on our ICAS scores, our ranges scores for reading, ELA in grades three and four were the top of the state, Fort Barton's math grade score for fourth grade was one of the top scores in the state, the middle school, we showed strong growth in all areas, so in every area, the middle school is growing from grade one year to the other, and the high school was recognized for having a large percentage of students in the highest category for ELA. So some incremental growth there, something to celebrate, certainly we have a long way to go, but showing that in fact, if you invest in our schools, we can achieve great results. And then lastly, just showing the colleges that our students have been accepted at over the years, and I know that's sort of, the prints there, it's kind of hard to read, but if you scan the list real quick, you're seeing some of the most competitive colleges in the country, which says to me that you can come to Tiverton High School and apply yourself and really go anywhere you want, and that our curriculum, that our teachers, that our program can get you to the top colleges. So I love this statement that the investment becomes the return before the return of the results, so we're going to ask the town again to invest heavily in the public schools in return that we want to, in return, we will produce some results. However, that investment this year also puts us in a predicament. So we'd love to ask the town to increase the budget by 4%, and you can see the numbers, the first two lines there, and as I've already said to you earlier, that still leaves us with a $1.7 million deficit. I'm showing you part of a solution to that deficit, again, this is certainly your decision to use money from fund balance and Medicaid, those would be the highest amounts I would recommend, which would then take that $1.7 million budget and drop it down to 850,000, which is still a significant cut. And a number one question that people would be asking, well, how can you have a deficit and you're asking us for 4%, right? We've got to be able to explain that, and I think there's three reasons for that, or two reasons and one reason I want to dispel. The two reasons are long-term underfunding, and I'll show that to you momentarily, and then as a result of underfunding, wise decisions by the school committee to use one-time monies like fund balance and Medicaid to balance the budget, to avoid cuts that in fact come back now and compound the problem. So as far as underfunding the schools, and I'm sure you people are more intimate with this than I am, you've lived this, but if you go back to FY '16, '17, '18, and '19, you're seeing the budgets increase by 0.6%, 0.6, 0.9, 1.1, and then finally, last year, moving up 5.5. But all those years that were at those 0%, you had energy, transportation, special education, insurance, all going up anywhere between 3% and 10%. So you were driving a deficit higher and higher, compounding a problem by using one-term money, that now that one-term, one-time money is no longer available, you've compounded a problem here. So I think it's important for people to understand that decisions made in previous years are sort of coming back now.
Peter, those bars are actually the total budget as well, not the local appropriation.
That is.
It's the total appropriation.
Right. So all of those increases were coming out of increases in state aid. We need to make that point.
Last year came.
Right, right.
And then, okay, so we understand that, you know, the fact that we're asking for 4% and still have a deficit as a result of this, underfunding and using one-time money, I wanted to dispel a meth that says, I've heard people say, well, you know, we're overpaying teachers, you just signed this big contract with them. Well, here's what happened when that contract was signed. This is our current comparison of Step One teacher scale, and you can, I think to suggest to anyone that we're not overpaying teachers in Tiverton at Step One, and we're going to be sending our administrators out to job fairs this spring, you know, we have some vacancies as a result of attrition or retirements and so forth, and we're trying to compete with all these towns for the best and brightest teachers, and this is how we stack up. And again, it moves, stays pretty much the same as you get to your sixth year here working in Tiverton, we are not overpaying our teachers by any means. And then at Step 10, our top step, which isn't always the top step at these comparison communities, some of these other communities have 11 and 12 steps, but apples to apples, 10 is the top step here in Tiverton, you can see that we finally move up, you know, sort of to the middle of the pack, but certainly still not suggesting by any means that we're overpaying and that this contract is causing any type of irreparable harm. So another factor I want to bring to your attention.
So Peter, before you move off that, can I just ask, is there a way of easily knowing how many of our teachers are Step 10 and how that compares to other communities? Because I think that's another thing that drives some of this, is that with the reforms in, well, there's two things, I, you know, just by observation, I don't have data necessarily to back this up, but the, certainly the retirement reforms of the state in the last five years have pushed the population of teachers to be more at the higher steps, and I think to our strength, actually, this is a strength, there are a lot of people that stay in Tiverton at Step 10 for decades, and that's actually one of the strengths of the school district. So I, and I don't know if there's a way of knowing what comparator districts are like. I would guess we're similar, but I'm not sure.
I know for, I certainly could give you the percent of teachers at our steps, I know we've already calculated that.
But you know what, like Portsmouth, Middletown, Little Compton, Bristol Warren are? Well, what their percentage is at Step 10?
I don't, but I think I can find that there.
So, you know, basically, you're looking at longevity, which in a, you know, you would spend, you would think of that as a positive in that people are, A, more experienced and they are, they have great job satisfaction, so they stay in the district, and you create that institutional memory and that culture of education that can be very powerful for a district.
May I say something?
Yeah, sure.
The other thing is that a lot of people take for granted that the citizens on the outside of the school department understand that a Step 10 teacher takes 10 years, but a lot of people don't understand that. You don't start your career as an educator at 10th step, you start at the first, and it takes 10 years to get there. That's a lot of years unto the belt, you know, to go from the 40, whatever, to the 70, whatever.
That's a great point.
And then there's the lanes.
And lanes, yep.
So you certainly want to dispel that that contract we signed had no impact, it was the right thing to do, and certainly people shouldn't look at that as what's driving this deficit by any means. I think another important point for this committee to understand, and for the town to understand, is that, as you're aware, fund balance that has been sent on, spent on all our school construction projects, the state reimbursement is returned to the town, and I think it's important for you to know that last year and this year, we have returned over $700,000 to the town based upon what you spent out of your fund balance and our operating budget for construction projects. And we'll, and again, the construction we're doing this year, I know it's smaller scale, the bathrooms and things like that, we will still get a 40% reimbursement on that that will go to the town. So important to say that we used our budget to fund projects here, the town receives the 700,000, we're asking for about 900,000 this year for 4%. Just an understanding that we're sort of funding, we potentially could be looked at funding our own raise here, if people want to look at it that way. But again, I want to reiterate the point, I want to come back to that we're asking for a 4% raise, and we're still dealing with a $1.7 million deficit. And so I just want to address that deficit a little bit and say to you, you know, there's ways to sort of look at this, and you've already heard me talk about, it's your decision if you want to use fund balance and Medicaid money, that could drop it down to 850. With that 850, we're still hoping that maybe we see some savings in insurance, we don't know the final number there, and then we would do a reduction in expenses and personnel, and we look at that this way, but we'd also look at some of our revolving accounts, but I want to say to the committee that's a small amount of money, I'm not sure how much that could even cut into the deficit, but then we would look at it by a per pupil basis, assign it out to schools, we would talk to our principals, Amy and I would work with everyone who's a cost center leader here in the district, we would start with expense accounts, we want to preserve our people, if that doesn't do it, we go to non-instructional personnel and eventually into instructional staff. But I'll say to you, at 850,000, we're hitting that third bullet. So, you know, and certainly we would look at equity, we work with the committee, you know, you're certainly your final say on all that, but we would present you lists and ideas and how we feel we could close this gap, so.
The third bullet meaning reduce instructional staff?
I'm sorry?
You say that hitting the third bullet up there.
Basically how I said it, we do expense accounts first, non-instructional, and then instructional staff.
Right.
But at 850, we're cutting into instructional staff, it's just, you don't have enough
margin to do that.
Non-instructional people at 850 to cut, that would get you to 850. So I'd end this with saying, we need that 4% desperately, it still leaves us with a big problem and some tough decisions to make, and we'll continue to work with you through this budget process by, you know, updating you with the presentations this evening, next time we meet, we will get into special education and capital, and then that meeting after that, if this budget remains, we'll start bringing to you those lists of how we would address that 850,000 deficit. So if in fact, you know, and that deficit's again incumbent upon your decisions to use fund balance and Medicaid money. So with that as background, I'll pause and see if you have any questions, and then we can move into the detailed presentations.
Deb wants to go first.
Nope, Diane, do, I don't care, I'll go. I have lots of questions, but I think we all probably do so.
I'll try and arbitrate this. Elaine, questions? Sally? Mrs. Farnworth?
Okay, I'll kick things off. There are a number of large-scale budget operating items that we have yet to finalize. For example, our transportation contract, it is up this year, you all will be negotiating with the bus companies with regard to that contract. How can we get a sense of comfort in the estimate without having any kind of discussion going on about the contract?
And I'll jump in there, because it doesn't make sense if I'm looking at '18, '19, that we actually went down from those years?
The transportation?
Yeah, so we were at 1.3 million in '18, 1.4 million in '19, and now we're down to 1.2, so to Diane's point.
What line is that?
It is line 55111 on the second page, transportation contracts of the detail under the operating, two-page operating budget.
I wonder if that's a shift in UCLA accounts?
It potentially could be, that's, but to your point is, you know, regardless of the comparison, just getting comfort with that number.
I mean, do you have any kind of timeline as to when you'll be speaking, putting out an RFP, what's the process going to be?
So we have the opportunity to renegotiate with first students, so we wanted to give them the first crack at the apple, we've sort of indicated to them, if they want to retain our business, we have a number that they have to come in below, certainly we have to bargain in good faith, so we're waiting to see where they come in at, and if they don't meet a number that we're satisfied at, then we're going to jump into that a bid and go out.
Okay. So that's still an item that's in flux? I think the, the big elephant in the room on this operating expenses, though, is special ed. It has been, those costs have been rising out of control over the last several years, and you're projecting another $320,000 increase for 2021.
That's line 55630 and 55640 on that detailed budget for you guys, it's page two.
So, and I know that we're going to be focused on special ed next, next week, but I think it's a place we have to look at very closely. to see, you know, what is driving these increases? What, if anything, can we do about it? And what help can we get to pay for this? It, it seems as though we are, our hands are tied when it comes to special ed expenses. We, we have to pay it, obviously, and we want to pay it. But when it's rising this disproportionately to everything else, it's, it's becoming clear that it's, we're having a hard time managing it. So, again, I, I know we're gonna be focused on this a little bit more next week, but I just want everybody to know that this is a big driver here and that we probably need to spend a good amount of time going through that and understanding it in its entirety.
Well, that's 1.3 million dollars from FY18 actuals.
That's, it's a 200% increase in one light item and an 800% increase in the other one over the three-year period. I wonder if it wouldn't be worthwhile when we have Sarah, could we potentially invite our reps and our senators to come and listen to that discussion? Because this is an issue for the state as well. Not, and it's not just something Tiverton's experiencing.
Say that, this is, every district I've ever worked in, I'm sure Amy would speak to you too about hers is, you know, it's a, it's a global problem that we all face because it's a fixed and mandated cost. You have private institutions that can raise your tuition.
And that seems to be the biggest issue. It's not our in-house costs that are rising as far as I can tell.
Oh, we maintain our in-house costs.
It's, it's the tuitions to other outside. Who just sort of send us a bill without any.
You're absolutely right.
So I, I think we need to either bring those things back into house?
Yeah, and we have, and.
We can't always.
Yeah, I know.
Right, you can't bring back certain, you know, certainly students, you know, one.
We just don't offer every service.
Students blind, that's a service, you know, they're entitled to that education. We want to provide it. There's certain things we can't bring back in house. We brought back a lot and there's a document in those new budget pages I gave you this evening. And Sarah will speak to it when she comes in two weeks. But you usually have it ahead of time. There's a program at the middle school, it's Bradley program, costs us about a half billion dollars. We're taking it over next year at an expense of about 350. So, you know, we got 150,000. So I use that as a tangible example to share with you. Everything is examined, every program, every student is scrutinized.
But that's why I say, can we bring our legislators in for the same meeting when we're discussing this? To let them know, we can't absorb 200% and 800% increases. We can't.
No, absolutely not.
Because we, we, we have to, we want to pay it and, and those, those students deserve a free and appropriate education. But so does everyone else. And when we're absorbing millions and millions of dollars, i- it's, the state has to do something. And I know they're aware of it. I pulled a, and Peter, you probably know this, I pulled something off the Mass site. Mass has a circuit breaker, it's called, to help districts defray special ed costs. Last year, they distributed 326 million to school districts, which would be equivalent to 49 million here. What we distributed, 4.5. So that's an issue. You want to be like Mass until it comes to funding. So, so I just wonder if we could, I know it's kind of late notice, but maybe we could invite our legislators to come to that meeting where Sarah's gonna be so that we can talk this through with them.
Well, I would, I would invite the budget committee too. I know they've got plenty of work.
I think the town council, whoever wants to come, please.
Plenty of work and they've got more than enough meetings to go to right now, but frankly, this is what's gonna drive the discussions. So.
So this is the reason?
They will at least be able to ask the questions.
Exactly.
In a detailed way that will hopefully make them understand and be satisfied that we're giving them the correct information. Or maybe they'll discover things that, you know, we aren't discovering.
I think invite them to come and listen to the conversation. We'll have, you know, we'll have our legislators here. Hopefully everyone can, at least most people can be available because it, it is, it's huge. One went up 1.7 million since 18, the other one went up 1.2.
It's the tail that's wagging the dog. We don't, you know, if we solve that problem, everything else is solved.
Now unfortunately, it could just as quickly flip the other way. Because we, that's how we built a lot of our fund balances is because it flipped the other way. We had a couple of kids age out, but it doesn't seem to be going in that direction.
Well, they just increased the.
Age limit?
To 22, it's 22nd birthday, so you lose a year of aging kids out, which we're feeling right now.
Which we're feeling. And I think, haven't we heard, I think Amy, you talked about this, just, there's just more social, emotional issues. And, and that's not gonna go away. So the state has to help. I mean, you know, Mass is doing its thing, it's helping, it's, you know, and, and we aren't even anywhere comparable. And this is a budget buster for us. So if you don't mind, you guys, you think that's a good idea? Just invite everyone and, I mean, Sarah's gonna be here, so it's a great time to have that conversation and she's.
I think, and, you know, rather than us being the conduits of the information, it'd be useful for them to be able to ask sort of more directly to the people who are administering the programs.
So thank you Diane, that's an excellent point, Mrs. Farnworth.
I think too, one thing of note, right? If we withdraw another 400,000 from our fund balance next year, that's pretty much it. So what do we do in '22?
Right, and that's just more structural deficit. Anyway, Mrs. Black, I'm gonna recognize you.
Thank you. So Deb, you remember Carol Herman brought this up. When the state reps were here one night, as one of the main issues that she wanted to talk about was what was the state gonna do to help us with those high costs? And as Deb said, I saw it in the budget when it just came out, the governor's budget. And I looked at it again and really laughed when I said, oh yeah, you want to take care of the whole state with that little amount? Because I know what we've gotten now, it was unbelievable. The other people we can't forget is the federal government, because when they passed IDEA in 1970s, they were supposed to give 40% at least, and they were down so low in the low teens, if that. So they never kept, you know, it's a trail of broken promises as far as I can see. Everybody talks about helping the children with special needs and we all want to do that, for sure. And then they, they never come up with the money. And we work so hard on this budget, we really do every year, trying to balance it, make sure all our kids have what they need, the best of teachers and, and then all of a sudden you look at that. It comes out of nowhere, we have no control over it. They just tell us, you're gonna pay this. So when I taught at Giraffe High School, I, I had a special needs class. I only had 12 kids in there. And Deb's heard this before, but when the mayor came by, they'd come visit with the city council, the big political thing. They were furious because there were two teachers in there with 12 kids. And they said, this is gonna stop. They said, we're not doing this. And they took them out in the hallway and they said, guess what you'd pay? For placement with, for every one of those kids, private placement, starting at whatever amount they told them. And they came back and, oh, you love your job, you want to stay. It was really, but that was really an eye-opener back in those days even, because it costs to go away to wherever they went in Massachusetts. So we're still having that problem, but I think it would be great to have everybody here, the reps, the budget committee, so they'll know. And we can all talk about this together.
I think it's important, it's a community issue, it's a state issue, it's a.
It certainly is, it certainly is. And most importantly, we want to make sure every kid gets whatever they need. That's the message we first have to send out. That's, and that's, we've always said that and that's just true.
Diane, did you have more?
I do have one more. And Dr. Sankeyoni and Ms. Rodrick, can I ask that we maybe do a little bit more of a deep dive into health and medical premiums at, at our next meeting? I don't know, all, all I have here is this one line item. It's, it's growing substantially as has been the case in the past. But is there anything we can look at that breaks things down a little bit more finally? What is, what is the average co-pay? What, what are the, the trends with the bill? Why are we going up again? Is this something Blue Cross has already communicated? These types of things may be a little bit more of an in-depth look at those costs because they, they're not as large as some of the others, but they are significant in their own right. And maybe we can look at that a little bit more deeply too.
That's 52101.
52101 and 52122. And I think there might be some flip between the two for, because one is going up, one's going down.
Yeah, 52122 is going down.
But net, it's net still going up fairly substantially. I'm just trying to get an understanding of what that's all about.
Beth Larkin? So I know line items are hard because it's not always an apples-to-apples comparison because UCOA shifted over the years. But I, I kind of have two comments only because, you know, I know the budget committee's gonna get this detail and I had the question. It's sort of odd that we go from 299 to 346 down to 33 and 20.
What line you want?
The grand total. Grand total FY20 budget on page two, right at the bottom. Total budget, it's sort of odd that we go up, go up, go down in FY20. I don't, I don't think any of us think we went down in FY20. And that could be maybe 19 is, maybe that has special grants in it or something that's not, is that?
19 probably includes capital spending.
I was gonna say, Amy, that's probably the capital, right? So I wonder if there's any way, so that's my comment, is, is I thought it probably did. Is there any way to pull, I think it was 2.1 million, is to do maybe a little reconciliation on the bottom, just so people see that wasn't, that is not an operating budget? If that's correct, I don't think it is. I don't know what that 356099, I think it's, I think it does include capital.
It does.
So that way they can see, without capital, it really is 32.5, you know what I mean? And then the other thing I'd like to show on the bottom here, if we can. So if we look at, for instance, FY20, the budget was 33053119. We got 31890. FY19, the budget was 34609986. We got 3233, just so people can see, that's what's driving that deficit. We didn't get that as a budget, we didn't get that money, we didn't cover it. So I don't know if there's a, a easy way to kind of, two lines, back out the capital and then just show the appropriation below it.
Yeah, you speak to a really important point, which is there are so many ways of slicing and dicing this. And, and there's a big difference, I mean, you'd think that they are related. You'd think they'd be more closely related between the budgeted, the actuals and the appropriation and then the appropriation minus state aid. And that's, I think, we have to really strive for clarity with how we present this to even the budget committee.
Yeah, I just think it's important that they know, we didn't get this.
Right.
And you look at this, they might not, it might not.
No, I know, I know.
I want to, I want to paint a picture so they don't even have to think.
But it's, and it's not just the budget. I mean, the budget committee's probably gonna understand it much better than maybe even we do. But, you know, for the public in particular, they have to understand, you know, what does it actually mean in terms of your, you know, what, what are the tax, you know, what is the amount of money that is being assessed and taxed to the town? To the taxpayers of the town? Not necessarily what the school spends, because there's other revenue streams. And we've, you know, for better or worse, created structural deficits because that money had been appropriated to education. It was in our fund reserve and we were saying, okay, you know, we have to return that in some fashion to the town. Now, a lot of that was returned in capital expenditures that then came back from RIDE. But, you know, 1.2 million, I think, over the last two fiscal years was returned as funding of the, of the school department's budget out of the fund reserve, right? Am I, I'm correcting that?
What are you talking about?
Well, that included the capital spending, yes.
700,000, was that?
No, FY, so we're in FY20. FY18, FY19, or maybe it was FY19 and then it was brought forward to FY20. We appropriated money into the budget from the fund balance for operations.
Yes, and we, and they reimbursed 700,000, Amy, was it, to the town?
No, I know, but, but we appro, but that didn't, had nothing to do with the.
It's FY20 only.
No, it got carried into.
What do you mean, we appropriated? We used our fund balance.
We used our fund balance.
Well, yes, we used our fund balance.
We voted to use it.
We used 600,000, I want to say, in the, from the fund balance for FY19. And that got carried through into FY20 as well.
Right, that, that helped create the 1.1 million.
Correct.
So that's why I want to show, if, just think that through a little bit, how we can show that on the bottom.
The difference between the budget and the appropriations.
Right. Because I don't want people to look at 34609986 and go, why is your budget going down? It's really not, because there's capital in there. And even when we back out capital, we still didn't get what we needed.
Right.
And that's what created the deficit. So if you guys want to think about how.
Well, how do you present that? Right.
I can certainly add a summary, I, I know exactly what you're asking for.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because that, that to me, when, like I said, I was like, oh, and then I was like, oh, it dawned on me. I was like, oh, capital's in there. And oh, we didn't get 33 million, we only got 31890, so, okay, thank you very much. The only other thing I had, that, that, and I do want to bring this up, we discussed this last night, but I want the rest of the board to be aware of this. That max calc, right there, where is it, 850?
I'll get it to you.
There, there is and going to be some disagreement on how that's calculated. There is, we went, we had quite a bit, a lot of discussion about this. How you calculate the 4% max.
Oh, oh, okay.
So it certainly was our consensus that the correct way is to, because what the law says is you take your total appropriation, you back out state aid and you take that number times 4%. So in our belief, what you back out is enacted state aid, not what was on the budget. But there are those that believe it is budgeted state aid. And I do believe there's gonna be an issue with it. But I think we.
How much is the delta there?
300,000 this year. Yes, we, we budgeted way more aid than we ended up getting. So, so I think our consensus was, let's present what we believe is accurate. We believe that's the way to calculate it. And if the budget committee feels differently, then, you know, that's for them to, I mean, they'll have to pursue it.
I, I think Deb, though, to make a point, the. It's a 13,000 difference in the, the 4% calculation.
No, but in the total, it's 300,000.
It's 13,000.
But in terms of how.
For the 4%.
But it only results in a 12%, or a 12,000.
No, because it's three, it's the 300,000 shortfall plus the 4% of that. Because your starting point is a higher municipal number to begin with.
Correct.
Which, which is what we will get.
So if, so I guess that, you know, again, I guess to my point, people are, I mean, there are people who are, you know, ravenously interested in that. And, you know, I guess I'm among them, but the, I guess the question I would have is, if you calculate it X Y, X way, what's, what's the maximum?
It's over 300,000 dollars difference.
It's a 300,000 hour difference.
That's what we're telling you.
Okay.
So Dr. Larkin?
Yeah.
If we were, so if we were to calculate the 4% based on the budgeted state aid, the 33174 would be 316 to 320,000 dollars less. So our deficit would be 300,000 dollars more.
Okay, so I guess my question, I, I may be, wasn't clear on my question. What was the difference between the budgeted and the enacted state aid?
300,000.
316,000.
So shouldn't that only make at most a 12,000 difference between?
Because that's your new starting municipal, so you start with that plus the 4% off of that.
So in the calculation, I, I don't have a whiteboard, I could map it out for you, but.
Yeah, 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 well, that's, you know, people are ravenously interested in this.
319, okay. You can either, in order to get the base upon which you calculate the 4%, you can either take out the budgeted aid of 7.5 or the actual aid of 7.2. So there's a 300,000 dollar delta.
Yeah, okay.
So you are correct, the actual net additional funds from that base calculation is only about 12,000.
Okay.
But in terms of the toll that we get from the town, you then add back what you subtracted to get to the base.
I see.
So if you've subtracted and you're, and then you add it back.
So the fact, so in a sense, dare I say this? And, you know, this has always been one of the arguments about bifurcation and all that other stuff is the fact that the enacted was less was actually an additional appropriation of the town.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And again, we talked, the four of us talked it over. Amy sort of has a fresh perspective. She doesn't know the history here and she read through the state law. And there is certainly a belief that the actual enacted aid is the correct way to do the calculation. But I do know there's gonna be pushback.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I think we go forward with what we believe is the accurate number, and then if someone, if, if the Budget Committee chooses to challenge it, which is their right, then they'll have to seek legal, they'll have to seek legal advice from their town solicitor.
And definitely there will be people who will get into the weeds on that, and-
Is there any merit to having Steve see if there's any case law? Or do you wanna wait to see if they push back?
Yeah, I would say wait, only 'cause we're on a legal meter, we may not have to.
Yeah. But there's got to, this has got to come up in, like, North Kingstown or something like before.
Yeah, I would like an opinion from our attorney on this, I really would.
Well, we could probably wait until-
I don't wanna wait, you know why?
You wanna put something-
Today is January twenty-third, we have a month to figure this out.
And you wanna put, you wanna put something forward that you feel is defensible, Diane?
I do, I do.
All right.
All right.
Anybody opposed to doing that?
At least then we'll have, we'll have something that he, they've at least looked a little bit into case law. 'Cause that's, I would imagine the same thing, Jerry, that it's gotta, it's had to have come up somewhere else.
I mean, if, or a decision by RIDE or something, if it wasn't actually-
The only reason it's never come up here is we don't-
We do have a decision by RIDE, back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, the Town of Tiberden and School Committee of Tiberden argued that point is wry.
We were the case law, huh?
You were the case law.
Typically enough, I guess.
Well, we argued that we get the state aid back. This four percent, what's this based on, wasn't part of that.
Um, actually, it was, it talked about, it talked about, um, that you, as you, the word you used before, Dr. Larkin-
Bifurcation, yeah.
It's one amount.
Right.
And the fact that the state aid is more or less than what you budgeted is irrelevant.
Doesn't matter.
Right.
And so that the state aid, um, excuse me, the appropriated number is the one number, end of story.
And, 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 and again, we all have that, I'm telling you, that different people in this town read that completely different than how you read it.
I understand, I understand.
So, I just wanna be prepared that, and, and it could be that Steve just looks back to that wording, 'cause he, he, he the one, he's the one who represented us in the case. But to Diane's point, let's at least have them look at it and come back and say, yes, we agree.
Yeah, but that's always a number you can-
And then, and then at the end of the day, the Budget Committee has a right to interpret it differently, and, you know, we'll go from there.
Okay.
But I did wanna just make everyone aware that there certainly is a difference of opinion on how that gets calmed, which would be a major difference. Um, let's see, did I have anything? Diane did sped, that was one of mine.
Elaine, anything else?
All right, so we're, uh, we're gonna take a closer look at three separate budgets, and I believe we're starting with technology. So we'll look at technology, transportation, and curriculum and professional development, Steve.
Good evening. Uh, so today I'm going to be presenting the technology budget that we put in place for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Uh, so, the main line items that we would be budgeting for, and, uh, as you can see on the slide here, is capital at a hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, software at three-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-five-hundred dollars, uh, hardware is a hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twelve, supplies is thirty-five-hundred, and dues and memberships is at a thousand. Uh, I wanted to break down those just a little bit further for you. So, capital of that hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, it's to add additional touch TVs to all five buildings. The touch TVs are the ones that you see in this, uh, in the presentation rooms that we're doing right now. And upgrade an aging copier scanner at Central Office.
And that's on Fuse's list of capital.
That, that's correct, yes.
Thank you.
How much of that hundred-and-fifty-six is attributed to the copier versus everything else?
Thirty-six thousand.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The next line item is software at the three-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-five-hundred dollars. This is the large one. This includes all of the renewals for all the software that we have district-wide. This includes the internet access that's provided to all of the schools. This includes Aspen, which is our grading program that we use, and, uh, student information system. This includes the accounting software, and also online courses that we would potentially provide to students. Uh, so that's some of the different, um, items that would be found in that software.
And where is that line item in here, Amy?
There are multiple, uh, line items for software.
Okay.
What do these compare to FY nineteen, then?
Well, that's what, yeah, if you could, I mean, I think that's what we, we had talked to those guys yesterday about giving us the UCOA compa- accounts where these are when we're-
Yeah.
I can, I can certainly provide a closer summary of that, um, but I can tell you it's level-funded to the current year.
Okay.
Fifty-seven-three-oh-nine, fifty-seven-three-eleven, fifty-three-five-zero-two, fifty-three-two-two-two.
What was the fifty, fifty-seven-three-oh-nine, fifty-seven-three-oh-nine?
Three-eleven.
Three-eleven, fifty-
Fifty-three-five-zero-two.
Okay.
Fifty-three-two-two-two. Fifty-three-five-zero-three.
You know your budget.
Fifty-four-four-oh-seven.
Fifty-four-four-oh-seven.
Fifty-six-four-zero-seven.
Oh, are you in the hardware section now?
He's up above in supplies.
Yeah. These are all the software.
Can I, can I ask something here?
Please.
Can we get a better look at the detail?
Yes.
'Cause I, I will tell you, we, as you can see, we're in a tough pinch this year. And it, it may come down to picking and choosing what we need versus what we want.
Sure.
Yeah, and, and-
And to have a detailed breakdown, okay? All your renewals, I don't know what those renewals are. All your, uh, the Aspen, how much is Aspen? What, the accounting software, what are you buying, and, and how much is it? I think this year, more than ever, we need the detail-
Absolutely.
Behind these presentations.
I can provide that for you guys.
So, yeah, I think it would be much more helpful, like you said, to have, here's the UCOA accounts, here's my total budget, and here's the pieces I'm just pulling out to show you. Because it's really, really hard to see, okay, yes, it's level, but, you know, it's hard to see where it's falling within the budget.
Absolutely.
I don't know, do we wanna, do we wanna revisit this at the next meeting, or do we wanna just keep going a little bit?
Yeah, I thought to give them some time.
Yeah, we have. I mean, I would let David finish.
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, let him finish.
No, no, by all means, finish.
By all means, finish, yeah.
But just sort of-
No, no problem.
What we're gonna-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump to hardware, if that's okay? So hardware, there's only two line items that you're gonna see for hardware for us.
That I see.
Yes, it's, uh, year two of the lease for the one-to-one that we did, that, um, uh, was rolled out recently for all of our students in grades five through twelve. And the second line item that you see would be, uh, purchasing new devices for the incoming fifth grade.
So that's that ninety-four-six-eighty-seven?
Yes.
What line is that?
That is fifty-seven-three-oh-nine.
Oh, I see, okay. All right, 'cause that, 'cause that one does go-
That one does tie, so that makes them happy, yeah.
They, um, I, I thought we had purchased the Chromebooks, though.
To purchase the amount that we needed to get for the students and to keep us into, on the budget, we went with a three-year lease program on those. The supplies is the next line item there, that's a level funded right there at that thirty-five-hundred, which is fifty-six-one-on-one. And dues and memberships, which is, uh, for the team to go to MasQ, which is, uh, one of the seminars that we go and visit, and RISD, which offers the, uh, technology teams different seminars for free, uh, and different softwares, so we can learn, uh, new and upcoming things for our technology. And that's all I have for you guys today.
Can you go through your line items again, so I can just highlight them?
Absolutely, so-
Fifty-seven-three-oh-nine.
Well, I think they're gonna come back with us next week, as to what they are.
Yeah, do you want me to come back to you on that?
That's, that's fine. Can I just actually make another point real quickly?
Please.
At the top, where it kinda gives us the fiscal years, could we carry that through the entire document?
I wrote it at the top of mine.
I'm like- Well, I kinda just use this as sort of a, you know, spiral graph kind of thing.
I think you're gonna go to the third page, Amy.
Probably.
Huh?
She might, they, they might have to go to a third page.
Oh, there is a third.
Whatever you do, don't make it any smaller.
No, I wrote, but Jerry, that's, I, see, I wrote right at the top of mine, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
All right. I have enough trouble figuring out which fiscal year we're in. I go by academic years. Okay?
So, so, yeah, so when you come back next, next, next time, and, um, I mean, uh, you know, and we look at this, we may have some more questions, but, thank you.
No problem, and I will provide you all the softwares that we have and the UCOA code that matches to it, in a brief-
I know this all ties. I know this all ties.
Okay.
Although if you could give us the UCOA accounts for these guys, that would be great. Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll look, we'll look them up.
Any other questions for Dr. or Mr. Carnavale? Uh, Elaine? Elaine?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
Hello?
Thank you for speaking a little earlier, yeah.
All right, Deb, Diane. All right, thank you, Dave.
I'll wait until next week.
I think we're on ten-B, transportation presentation.
So this is, um, effectively, uh, the same information that you have in the budget pages. Uh, they are accounts, fifty-five-one-one-one. And-
Oh, I found that one. Stay there with me.
It is five-three-two-oh-nine.
Five-three-two-oh-nine, correct. So, um, as Ms. Von Worth said earlier, we're still in the process of negotiating with first student to, uh, giving them the, I guess, the right of first refusal to, uh, provide us with a bid, and we gave them, uh, or asked them for a one-year contract extension, and, uh, we're waiting to hear back on that. The cap that we gave them was three percent. Uh, you know, they could come in at two-point-nine-seven-five, uh, but we're still waiting on that. If, um, we don't, if they can't come back with a suitable number, uh, we will go out to bid. I've been, uh, in contact with the, the former Director of Administration of Finance, Mr. Fiore, and, uh, the last time we went out to bid, we did it in sort of a, if you wanna call it a consortium or group sort of effort, so he has given me information on that. And if we, uh, do decide to go out to bid, we can also sort of leverage, um, that same process. And again, that, I mean, we should be hearing any time now from the transportation company. So, in terms of, um, the budget, I did a three percent increase, just, that's what historically our, um, percentage has been going up, so I figured if we can hold them to that, great. In terms of the twenty budget, I do believe that the, um, the budget is a little low, it's a little under, but again, that's sort of the amount that I inherited, uh, not to keep using that as an excuse, but, um, I can certainly, um, as I have more information, can certainly up, update that and massage the, you know, line items in the budget to better reflect what it's actually gonna be. So, um, but we do know it is one of our hugest expenses, and we wanna keep it as, as low as possible. So, but I'm not expecting, whatever the number is, I'm not expecting more than a three percent increase.
So we had talked, Amy, and just so people are aware, um, you're not going, uh, you're not necessarily with a lot of this detail saying, well, it's, it's, uh, in this case, you, you, you have because you don't know any better, but you're trying to build from zero. You're building these budgets up from zero, not going, well, we're just gonna increase last year's percentage. So when you looked at the payroll, you looked at the payroll.
We, yeah, so when we looked at the payroll, we went by staff person.
Exactly.
And we did the same thing for medical and dental and so forth. So for this, um, the budget, you know, I'm looking at the actual invoices, and then upping it three percent.
Right.
To your point, Ms. Von Worth, that, that's exactly what we did with the medical. I looked at the actual invoices and then, um, deducted off what the employee portion was, so-
'Cause I think when we speak to the Budget Committee, that's an important point to make, that not only is UCOA not always apples-to-apples in those prior years, because they move stuff around, but FY twenty, you know, where it got landed, but that you, in fact, aren't basing your budget on la- year, last year, you're building your budget, so I think that's an important difference for them to understand. So, um, you know, we're building a budget here, not just going, well, last year plus a certain percent. 'Cause some of those percent, I mean, they do look wacky, some of the ups and downs.
Right, yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Roderick?
No questions, just, you know what, kudos. For a very detailed and as precise as possible take on, on this topic, and, and I, I think it, it benefits all of us to be able to see this amount of detail, so, thank you.
You made the accountants happy.
Thanks, Jimmy. So we, before we leave transportation, I'll call your attention to the line item on the bus monitors, regular education there. And we have the opportunity to request through RIDE, um, a waiver for our middle school bus monitors. So we're pursuing that, I just wanna put it, it certainly will be your decision in the end, but we-
'Cause the waiver is for the fifth graders, 'cause that's the only age that we have to provide.
Right.
What are the savings of that, if we, just rough?
It would be half, 'cause it's, it's, it's the elementary run and the middle school run.
Okay, so as we start talking about our eight-hundred-and-fifty, that certainly-
That could be impactful.
Could be impactful, yeah.
Again, it, it's, it'll be your decision, so we've inquired to see if they would consider it. If we hear back from them, we'll bring it to you folks. Just, just so you know, it's on the table.
Thank you.
And that's three-
Pursuing all options.
Five-three-two-oh-nine?
It would be-
Yes, five-three-two-oh-nine, definitely.
The two-eighty-six. Yeah, which is a middle school run.
Right.
I'm sorry, what's the other, what'd you say the other one is, two-eighty-six?
The two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-
Oh, oh.
Inline, five-three-two-oh-nine.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's what I was, okay. All right, well, that would be nice.
Yeah, and it might come in helpful or handy.
All right, any other questions?
To at least have the option.
Sally, Elaine? Okay.
All right, so the last one is taking a look at our curriculum instruction and assessment, professional development budget.
So, before I start, I just wanna say that in this modern world, um, and with UCOA having so many choices of where to, uh, line item things, um, many of the things that are supportive of instruction, and the focus of our work in terms of learning, are actually in the software lines. Um, so, um, makes sense, I think, and so when we come back with that detail, we'll be able to provide, like, a rationale for each, each one of those, but that affects our students and our learning. And so, um, my piece of this budget is, um, and again, by design, we wanted to put everything that we could in what they call web-based instructional software, which is the fifty-three line, uh, one of the fifty-three lines that David, uh, provided to you. So, um, those subscriptions, which again are for teachers and students, um, and in our one-to-one world, are in the technology budget, which is why this budget, while it's the focus of our work, looks a little lighter, um, because it's a modern world, we work together, and, um, you know, we just had to make some choices, and so we consolidated all of the software in the technology budget. It makes sense, um, we certainly work as a team, and we all know that, um, we vet what we have and make sure that the focus is on the learning, and, um, we've been really strategic about that under Dr. Senkione's direction, so, um, I'm proud to say we have really solid decision-making with teachers at the table, teachers are making those recommendations, and we vet anything before we make a purchase. And obviously, make sure that it is going to enhance and deepen the learning for kids. So many of the things that, um, you might expect to see here in the olden days, when we used pencils as a primary tool, are now in the software budget appropriately, so. This is the overview of what isn't there, curriculum and instruction, assessment, and professional learning. And I just put the main drivers under each one. So, um, because we're a small district, and because we are working toward making sure we have continuity across the grade levels and throughout the district, many of the instructional materials are purchased centrally. And so that includes, um, teacher manuals, student guides, student workbooks, and manipulatives for math, for science, for our new ELA program, and also our online and offline textbooks. It also includes the work that we do to make sure that our, what we're teaching, um, is what the kids need, and so that is- the kids need, and so that includes some stipends, but those are the main drivers. Many of our universal screenings and tools that we use to make sure that each child is getting a personalized experience are actually now automated, and in the software line, there is a small amount of them, this amount here, which really is, is not software, and involves some of the training, continuity, and data review that we do on students, but we do have early literacy benchmarking, we have universal screening on both reading and mathematics in the Common Core standards, and we are building a universal screening for social emotional skills, which we'll be proud to roll out to you in a few months. The final piece is the professional learning piece, and so you can see here, again, the main drivers under professional learning. We have, thanks to your decisions and investment, a Witten Wisdom implementation, which is ongoing, that's our reading, writing, thinking, speaking, and listening program, K through eight, and that will be a three-year implementation with really high-quality professional support and learning and coaching for our teachers. So, that will continue going forward. We're also hoping to focus on writing in the content areas for our secondary teachers, high-quality instructional practices to maximize what students learn and how they learn, continuing to promote social emotional competencies, and deepening learning through technology. Much of that is ongoing pathways for our teachers. We'd like to make some small investments in online professional learning for our specialists, particularly the art and PE specialists, and those folks have been hoping to get that as sort of one-offs among, you know, and very specialized instruction that they provide, they don't always get the level of face-to-face training, so we'd like to leverage some small investments there in online professional learning for them going forward. And then we do have some district-wide memberships which support the instructional leadership in particular.
So, the same with these, when, with, some you said are in software, some aren't, so if we could just have UCOWA count where they are? And then, Amy, you're just highlighting what's in there, these aren't necessarily increases. You're just highlighting what makes up the budget.
It's all level funded.
That's what I thought.
These are just the main drivers.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to have a deeper look at the detail, however. Can you go back to the last slide, you were just showing it's not in our... Okay. Seventy-eight thousand for professional learning, so clearly it's not a number that came out of a cloud. So, each of these line items, I would think, has some kind of a dollar value tied to it in your budgeting work. And I think that we need to see that this year. Okay. It's, it's a large number, and, you know, if, if we're forced at some point to make choices, I want us to be able to make cognitive choices.
Okay.
Do we...
Yes, for seventy-eight thousand dollars, yes.
I'm not against having the detail, I just think at some point, Dr. Senkione and his team are going to have to present choices to us.
There is a trust, and it may come down to we can't afford any of it, who knows?
Well, that's what I mean, I think at some point, we're looking at 875.
We want to provide to you the best we can, and, and so having a better handle on exactly what this is, I mean, you know, Witten Wisdom implementation, what is it that costs money to do that at this point for year two? Not understanding it is really what it is.
I mean, I'm not, yeah, I'm not against having the detail, I just, I just think at some point-
Me either. Information is power, but sometimes it makes your eyes glaze over, so.
It's really exciting, I am thrilled to talk about it as often and at length as you provide.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think it's reasonable to ask for the, the information, and if we get to that granular level of sort of making choices.
I think everything will be on the table, and we'll be able to make more informed decisions.
I mean, if, yeah, okay, got it. Elaine or Sally, any questions? All right. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
So, we are, so before we go, did we skip nine?
We skipped a lot of stuff, Jim.
Well, we moved up the budget, and then we went to the other budget part.
Dr. Larkin, before we, before we move on, could I, could I just speak for just one second?
Sure.
I wanted to, to acknowledge my staff between, you know, I was tasked, or my office was tasked at the last meeting with finishing 2019, getting the 2020 year-to-date information to the Finance Committee, working on the budget, doing the fiscal impact analysis for the Council 94 contract and all that, and I want to say, my office was able to complete all of that, and that's sincere thanks to Carolyn Mendes and Dorothy, Dorothea Eckersley. They were instrumental in helping me accomplish all of that, so I just want to make sure that they get formal recognition on the record. I know Carolyn's probably hiding right now, but, but I honestly could not have done it without them, and we seem to be forging path, a good team, and, and a manner of working, so I just wanted to make sure that the committee was aware of that.
And we, we did, we did put a lot on your shoulders, I, and-
And I didn't do it by myself, so I just want to make sure that they also get credit because they certainly deserve it, and they, anything I've ever asked for at any hour of the day, they provided like that, so.
Okay.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Carolyn, and thank you, Dorothy.
And I'll just speak for myself, but I bet I can speak for the rest of the committee. Back at you, we're really very impressed with how you've been able to bring a lot of this together, so thank you.
You're welcome, my pleasure, I love being here.
Good.
Scarily enough.
Okay, so, nine. Policy development revision and review, and skip that much.
That's all.
So, policy number 1142, health and wellness, first reading. Any comments?
If I may, there were just two minor changes, you have a lot of redlining in front of you, I just want to highlight them for you. So, our Subcommittee on Wellness did meet, and then the policy Subcommittee met as well, with input, and thanks to Karen Weatherell at the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition, we recommend these changes, and the two changes you'll see, many of it is compliance changes and small wording changes, but the two substance was are the addition of social emotional learning as something that the Subcommittee would have input on, the Wellness Subcommittee would have input on. That is highlighted on the first page, and then the detail is available for you on the ninth page, which is labeled as Page Six. Just adding that piece there is one of the important aspects of wellness. Our state does actually have competencies that have been adopted by the state that we are expected to address, and so this would just ensure that that Wellness Subcommittee had some input on that. The other substantive change is the Food Advisory, Food Service Advisory Committee, that is on the sixth page and labeled as Page Three because you have the redline version. That Food Advisory Committee, we just made it a little more lenient in terms of the principal being able to designate someone to attend those meetings in his or her absence, and making sure that there was a little more leeway in the number of students who participate in those, but we certainly want to keep that as a best practice. Those are the two main changes.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes.
Do we need a motion, or is just first reading?
Well, it's a first reading.
First reading.
Is none, okay.
I, I just wanted to say, we discussed adding the social emotional piece quite a bit in, in Subcommittee, and I think it's important, it was important for us to know, I think it's important for the Board to know, that anything that comes from this Health and Wellness Subcommittee comes to us ultimately, so this is, you know, this is a recommendation, so I think there was some concern that, well, wait a minute, you know, recommending curriculum around social, you know, and emotional, you know, things that I think ultimately, you know, Ms. Dolly Roche, you know, pointed out, it's a Subcommittee of yours, anything that's going to be changed or recommended would come to this Board.
Yes, Mrs. Buck.
So, way back when the state passed this in 2007, nine, whenever it was, Mrs. Powell, you were a parent on the Committee, remember?
Yep.
Remember how hard it was for us to get this passed?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness, we brought it so many times back to the School Committee, and someone would have a sentence or something they didn't agree with, and we would try to explain to them, it's not optional, this is a state law, the state says we have to do this. Then we worked with the state through the years because they had 100% whole wheat and different things, and the kids were thrown in the trash because it was, you know, they wouldn't eat it, so we said, what good is it if it, so we worked with them, and through the Health and Food Advisory's asking the kids, how can we make this better, you know, you won't eat your vegetables, they said if we gave them ranch, to put it, dip in it, will you eat it? Yeah, okay, who cares, you know, they're going to eat it. So, we've, we've had a great time with this, but you were on the original Committee with us, Deb, as a parent coming to the meeting, so thank you for that.
That makes me feel warm.
We've been doing this for a long time.
Well...
And also, and also Diane Sander and I went up and worked with the state on this too as they were revising this, we used to go up and have meetings with them to, to put our, you know, two cents in and make sure it makes sense, but it's always ultimately up to the School Committee, of course, and then we'll go back to the Health and Wellness Committee, whatever you guys decide. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have some questions.
Fire away.
In the very first paragraph, in, I do apologize for not noticing this when we went through it in more detail earlier, but you're changing the name of the School Department, right in the first line, and I'm not really feeling that. It says Tiverton School Department, you cross it out, change it to Tiverton Public Schools, is there a reason for that? I think our legal name is Tiverton School Department.
Yeah, so that's fine.
Well, I don't know, it's Tiverton Public School, I don't know.
Well, it might be.
Yeah, I don't know what our legal name is.
Well, that's a question, what is our, what is our legal name?
Depends on whether or not, I guess we're incorporated, I think.
No, we're not incorporated.
So...
I just want, you know, if you're changing the name on this document, are you changing it on all of the documents?
No, just put it Tiverton School, doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'm just, what was the thought behind it?
Amy?
I was under the impression we were operating as that, our letterhead says that.
Well, actually it doesn't. I, I looked at a memo from Dr. Senkione today, and it said Tiverton School Department at the bottom.
Yeah, this says Tiverton Public Schools, so.
We'll just put Tiverton School.
We're either.
We're either.
Yeah. I don't think there is a legal...
I don't know, is there?
I don't know. If, if there is, it's probably-
We do have a tax ID, and I don't know, I can't recall the name on the certificate, but I get that one.
It's the town of Tiverton.
Right, but we have a separate one for the school department.
What is the highest, what is, what do the diplomas say?
A big part.
What do the diplomas say? Just Tiverton High School?
So, let's see what the EIN says, and we'll revisit that next time.
I mean, we may want to do a marketing or branding change, but for the purposes of policy documents.
We'll just put that in there.
Well, let's, let's see what the EIN says, and we'll go with that, because that's our official government.
Yeah, okay.
Castle Larkin School Department.
Dr. Larkin School Department?
Okay. On page, the third page, how's that? On the second paragraph down, I, this is really just a question, School Health and Wellness Subcommittee shall consist of members, and this is not a change in the policy at all, of the general public, a majority of whom are not employed by the school district. What is the current makeup of the Health and Wellness Committee?
That's the whole thing, it depends who shows up, but we're, we're really, that's from the state, they really want it to be more-
But who's on it? Because we don't necessarily see lists.
Yeah, well, you'll get a list, you'll have the people that come sign in, and we can give you that, you know, but it's all different times, different people.
But we are in compliance with the, those who are not employed.
Yeah, but we're trying to get more people, you know, from the community, definitely, to join with us, definitely.
So, maybe, maybe a list of who's on the Committee, whether they're showing up or not.
Yeah.
And maybe perhaps a blast from the principals to their PTOs inviting folks to-
Oh, definitely, we try that, and Carolyn sends it out to, to everybody, and we try to-
I know, I haven't seen anything, but-
Get the nurses, you should send it to the School Committee, okay, Carolyn?
To the parents in particular.
Yeah, we want the parents on it, definitely, yeah.
Okay, and again, that was just a question, not a, a-
No, but that's important, we need them to come.
Then you have the School Health and Wellness Subcommittee will meet in less than four times yearly, and the meetings will be posted, will be public and posted on the district website. I think in practice, you also post it on the Secretary of State site?
Yeah.
So, perhaps just adding that language?
Yep, we do, yeah.
Because it's not in there?
Okay.
So, just add, and Secretary of State site.
Yeah, I mean, if, if that's what you're doing.
Yes, we do. Hoping that they'll come.
Well, yeah.
And it's always before a School Committee meeting, so they won't have to come out twice. We've got to do that, too, and that's good.
On the third sheet, and I hope mine printed okay, right in the middle, there is a section, and this appears to be a new section, schools will utilize an electronic identification payment systems for all students to support participation in the school meal programs in order to prevent any social stigma. The district will ensure that all children are eligible, that, that all children eligible for free and reduced meals will have the opportunity to participate by means of frequent outreach to families and coordination with appropriate state agencies. The reason I'm calling this one out is it's, this is already part of another policy, and I'm wondering the thought behind including it here as well.
So, many of the redlines that are included here, and I believe that this is one of them, were recommended by the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition due to state guidelines being updated and the USDA guidelines being updated, and in fact, the revisions of these policies were coincidentally, and luckily, really timely because it was the same week as our onsite audit from, about the school lunch program and school breakfast program, and so it came up in that audit as well, and they asked if we were revising this. In terms of the content, we do have pins for each student, and students enter them, so that is no way to know whether or not my lunch is paid by my parents or paid through a subsidy.
I don't know, I, that, and-
The question was just, why isn't it?
Why is it both places? The, the concern I have is if it gets changed in one, will someone remember to change it in here, too?
So, maybe our Policy Subcommittee should look at 356 at some point and see what else is in there.
It's, that's the concern, is having the same place in more than one policy opens us up to inconsistencies down the road.
Where are you again?
In the middle of, not, when, up, up, up.
So, just make a note for Policy Subcommittee that we should look at 356.
Yeah.
At some point.
And what is 356?
356 is the meal charge policy, which we just updated last year.
So, we may be able to eliminate that, which would be awesome because we're eliminating as many as we can.
But where are you in this?
I don't know, these pages aren't numbered. It's the third sheet I had, so that's the one, two, three, fourth, I guess.
So, it's not a change, it's just for us to consider getting rid of the other one?
Yeah, they want that in there, right, Amy?
Four, five.
Yeah.
Yeah, they want it, just to put that in there.
Yeah.
Look for the highlight, food service, free municipal meals, and then-
It was good timing.
Yeah.
I, and I know you probably talked about this, at the bottom of that same page, there's a statement, it's, it's especially important that the district and all school faculty adhere to nutrition standards for the à la carte items sold during the day. I'm trying to understand the reasoning to put the word "and" school faculty in there, how it aligns with their responsibilities, or certainly we would never tell them.
Well, those guidelines include not using like food as an incentive, not providing snacks that are unhealthy if you're a kindergarten teacher and there's a snack time, making sure that any and all of those things are in alignment with those guidelines. And there is a clear delineation of beyond the school day, I believe it follows.
Well, yeah, and that's-
And then one of the things we're trying to do this year is the faculty wellness, that's what we've been focusing on this year with the trust.
I just, I have concerns over saying that the district and all school faculty adhere to nutrition standards. If, are we telling the English teacher that he or she has to adhere to a nutrition standard?
Well, when it comes to the children, we are.
The nutrition standards are about the students, and we do include this policy in our staff handbook, so that is clear that no incentives will be-
That, that faculty pieces with regard to the students.
Yeah.
Yeah, all of those guidelines are for-
No, understood, and I'm not questioning the bullets that you, that follow up, that speak to all of that. No, understood, and I'm not questioning the bullets that you, that follow up, that speak to all of that.
Sure.
It's just this first sentence is all.
Yeah, I can see where Diane is getting at, the implication is that we're mandating that the teachers all eat healthy lunches and...
That's not what the intent is.
No, I'm sure it's not, yeah.
It's well beyond, I think the authority of the school district.
Do you have a recommended edit there?
I don't know why they changed it, to be honest.
What did it say before?
The...
Before it was, it's especially important that the district adhere to nutrition standards.
Unless you want to...
I'm sorry, I'm not sure where you are, and again, these were not my red lines, these came from the state.
It's on the bottom, so you have district food service program, reimbursable meals, it's like one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph, Amy?
Yeah, it's the bottom of that page.
This is the very bottom of that page.
Bottom paragraph, bottom of page, next to the last page, I guess, well, of that section.
So the reimbursable meals section in the fifth paragraph down.
Page three of nine.
Food service program is the title in the middle.
Thanks.
I kind of get that you're trying to instill faculty wellness too, I'm just thinking this sentence...
So maybe just change it back to the way it was.
Sure.
Over the...
Did you find it?
I finally sat down and read it.
Yeah, no, you're all right. Jan Mcgandy would be having a fit.
Someday down the road, somebody's gonna say, you'll prove this.
I can sort of hear Jan in the back of my head.
Then, okay, so that was page five, I guess, right? So six...
Did you find it, Amy?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, okay.
I'll sit.
Thanks, Amy. On the page that says three of nine, it's a short page, this is just a clarification question, the last paragraph. Yeah, because I didn't have a color printer available. "In addition, the food service provider will work with the Director of Administration and Finance and the Chairperson of Health and Wellness to establish a food service advisory committee." Is it the Director of Finance or is it the Assistant Superintendent?
It falls under me.
It does still, okay, I just wanted to check that.
Yeah, he always came.
It was always that way.
You have to keep it in the budget. When they ask for steak and lobster.
Then on the, the next page, this is actually one that I want to, to challenge, page four of nine, another short page. And this is speaking about food at fundraisers and such. "Any groups, organizations, or individuals who wish to sell food outside of the school day, for example, PTO events, sporting events, shall be notified of nutrition standards of this policy." And then it says, "All groups will be encouraged to purchase items through the food service provider and to utilize the services and expertise of the food service manager for events." I'm just, you know, I'm thinking sporting events, they come in with their snacks and candy and such. Are you, are you actually trying to push that the food service provider be the one to provide food to PTO events and sporting events? Is that realistic?
So on the page prior, you'll see that there are exceptions, and the following events are exempt from the federal and state nutrition guidelines, and then after-school concessions is a bullet point there. These are all USDA recommendations and requirements to participate in the federal programs. And so we have to, my understanding is that, again, the audit and our Healthy Schools Coalition at the state and our Department of Health all point toward including this language in order to participate and get the... Just be able to participate in the federal reimbursement programs.
So you will be encouraging PTOs and boosters to work with the food service provider to provide food at outside events? That's how I'm reading this, is that in practice what you plan to do?
So concessions is an exception on the prior page, it's the third bullet down. And we are encouraged to have...
Inside the building, right?
Yeah, and in fact, the chart wells, our current food service provider does provide catering. And I believe that is actually part of our contract, that we will try and give them the first option for all catering events, which actually helps our budget because of the way that our contract is structured.
So can you understand why I'm reading it differently though, by the way it's written? That I forget to mean PTO and sporting events, but you meant it differently.
It's just that they'll be notified of the policy, which is the requirement. And I think by having it on our webpage, they're noticed of the policy.
And I, that, that I'm fine with, it's that last sentence that I was struggling with.
Which one, the encouraged?
That all groups will be encouraged to purchase items through the food service, all groups, all.
Well, you know, in part, yeah, so...
What if we say all, all groups will be, you know, just, all groups will, instead of encouraged, that will be, will be informed that they may purchase items through...
Perfect.
Is that enough to put that together?
I think you have to look at your verb.
Yeah, let's just get rid of encouraged, that, that all groups will be made, you know, you know, informed that they may purchase through TPS's food service provider and utilize the services, blah, blah, blah.
I was actually going to say the, the opposite, so you can drive a truck through encouraged, I encourage my children to do things all the time and they don't do them.
That's what I'm saying to you, don't you get it yet? That's why it says encouraged.
You know, I think encouraged says...
Well, I just think where if you just say all groups will be made aware or whatever.
Um, the same thing, I guess.
Will be given the option, you're given the option.
You know...
But they're not...
Encouragement is a way of making someone aware that they should empty the dishwasher and they don't do it.
Come up with something else for next time.
Feed the cat.
Absolutely.
No, they're an exception.
All right, we can make them aware or encourage them, I think.
Thank you, and I do have a few more, and I apologize, but this is a very long policy.
Okay, have at it.
Okay, next page.
Okay, let's go, next page.
And this is, the beginning of this is physical activity is the, the beginning of the paragraph that I'm going to be referring to.
Which, we, we really...
Physical activity is involved?
Yes, physical activity is involved, okay, so my, my comments are going to be directed at the bullets underneath one through eleven.
Okay.
Actually, one through twelve on the next page.
All right.
So item number two, and again, you consistently changed it to TPS, we'll deal with that, right? The school department will provide all students with a hundred weeks...
A hundred minutes per week.
Hundred minutes per week of instruction from Certified Health and PE. I, I read the state law on this, and the state law is an average of twenty minutes per day, which on a five-day week, you would say it's the same thing. But on a four-day week, are we locking ourselves into a hundred minutes?
No.
So should we perhaps say an average of twenty minutes per day to stay in, consistent with state law and allow you the flexibility to react to holidays?
Seems reasonable.
Then number three. And this is not new to this policy, but it did stand out to me, phys ed classes will have the same student-teacher ratios used in other classes. This is a contract issue, not a policy issue, in my opinion. I, I really think that we should consider just striking it.
Yeah, and I think we're setting ourselves up for a grievance, actually. We say we're violating our own policy, even if it's not...
You'll note from the text color that was existing policy?
It was.
No, no, I, yeah, we get that.
No, and I did say that right from the outset, it is existing, but I did, it did stand out to me.
So might as well clean it up now. Peter, do you agree that that should be a crack?
Then item number six, I just think it's a little bit confusing. And I just wanted to clarify, "Schools must provide a minimum of thirty minutes of moderate to vigorous physical activity daily for students in grades one to four, including a minimum of twenty minutes of recess." So we are saying that recess is twenty minutes, PE is ten at a minimum per day, is, is that really the intention?
In the state law, physical activity is discreet and different from physical education.
Uh-huh. So the, so recess is twenty minutes, right? So I'm not trying to understand what's the extra ten minutes going to be if it's not part of physical education?
So currently, what that often is, and first of all, recess is sometimes longer, but currently that includes movement breaks in the classrooms. Our teachers use things like Go Noodle and other activities, just provide breaks, they go over to the wall and do like push-ups, they dance, that, you know, there are various things...
It's a part where you're into the daily routine.
Within the classroom, yes.
Okay. And then number eleven. "School facilities should be available to student, staff, and community members outside of the school day and should be available to community agencies and organizations offering physical activity programs with the proper approval of school officials."
That shouldn't be in here.
I don't think that should be in here either. I think we have a building use policy separate from this.
Okay.
And then lastly, this is again just a question, "The district will work with community partners and local police to support and encourage safe walking and biking to schools, is this something that's a reality in practice?" Because I see it's an ad here.
It's something recommended by the state, certainly your discretion as the committee.
Well, if it says the district will...
Yeah.
That, I, you know, to me that makes it a requirement.
Right, so they, you know, there are may's and musts, and usually...
Should encourage maybe?
You know, you, you try and stick to those two terms, because may's in policy are things, are aspirational and don't box you in. Musts are, you're going to get dinged if you don't do it, so...
So may's better.
You only want to use a must for something that you're compelled to do by law and for which you, you know, know that you then have to allocate the resources to, to do it. So, you know, I think, you know, in every instance, sort of, you know, encourage is the same thing, you can encourage people to do lots of things, but that's not the same thing as requiring. And, and will is enough, you know, will is an equivalent more to a must than to a may. So, you know, to Diane's point, do we set ourselves up for violating our own policy for something that we don't necessarily have all, you know?
We don't have a schedule.
Sure, we would, we would love to encourage these things, again, you know, a may. You know, we will certainly partner with anybody who's willing to, you know, come to us and, and sort of facilitate people walking or running or biking to, to school. But when we say will, it sort of implies that we are going to, you know...
Have a program.
Yeah, it's a positive obligation. We're on one of the pages, you can guess which one it is, because they're not numbered. Page six of nine.
Is it possible, maybe just a word added, the district will endeavor to work with?
That's fine, yeah, like a goal.
Yeah, I mean, that's, so when you, when you modify it in that way, then you sort of say, you're, you're, you're creating a may rather than a must.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, just add a word.
Thank you.
Okay, and then finally, just one more question. Employee wellness, are you, just, and this is just for Amy, you are, are you the coordinator, Amy, Ms. Donnelly Roach? I have two Amys now.
It happens.
Are you the wellness coordinator?
Yes.
Thank you, that was it, just a question. Thank you. And I am finished.
We differentiate one another, she's teacher Amy, I'm finance Amy.
She's money, she's money, I'm a teacher.
Say money Amy.
Money Amy? No, I thought she was the queen of no.
The queen of no.
Yes. Thank you. I apologize for putting you through the wringer, but when I finally did sit down with that red pen, it just couldn't stop.
Not at all.
Okay, anyone else?
A lot of it comes from the state, so...
All right, so this is just first reading.
Thank you.
Do you have all adding?
No, there wasn't all of them.
Nope, the second is the school improvement team.
Thank you.
So can we move on to school improvement teams, everyone said their piece on this one?
Let's be.
Okay, so school improvement team, new policy number one zero two three. Any questions or comments?
One quick clarification, it is not a new policy, it is a revised policy, there is ten twenty-three in existence today.
Okay, it says new policy at the top.
That's here, right?
So since we didn't have, did we have school improvement teams, I don't think we did.
We did.
We did. It's much shorter.
And perhaps Dr. Sekiony would like to expand on why we're making these changes?
Happy to, Ms. Miles, with, you may recall in the presentation I made earlier this year with the Education Reform Act that was passed by Rhode Island, changed the number of things here, what I did is the up the ante for our school improvement teams, they define them at a higher level, who should be participating on those teams, how often they should meet, how they are selected, so we basically just taken the state policy and, and created a policy that supports that here for Tiverton.
Why did I have it in my head that the school improvement teams were supposed to have a function in appointing faculty? Am I misguided in that? Feel free to say yes.
Oh, well, you mean, you mean as in making recommendations with the principals to the superintendent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, the principal's hire faculty.
I thought the school improvement team was supposed to be...
Involved in those decisions.
Yeah.
Per the state law.
That's what they said at the meeting we were at.
Right.
I don't think I read that in the law.
Oh, I did.
I think it is in the law.
Is it?
I agree, I think it is too.
It's in the law, it's a set team and the principal.
Because this doesn't really define that.
No, no.
And the, the reason I bring that, well, part of the reason I bring that up is because the, you know, if the school committee... School committee can, you know, whereas we used to appoint, we will no longer appoint. But our oversight is through the writing of policy, not through hiring or, or other things. And I don't know where we write that policy, you know, so where is the policy if we want to be more actively involved, particularly in higher administrative hires? I don't know, you know?
Who, us?
Yeah, I'm just sort of putting, well...
Now, the law's pretty clear.
Not, not, not in making the, no, I know, I, I, I agree that there is no, we do not have the decision-making capacity. I...
We hire one person.
We hire one person, correct.
That's it.
However, I think that we can still extend oversight in meeting people before they're hired.
That's different than this, though.
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
So that, that needs to be another agenda item.
Right, okay.
So maybe we want to throw this back to the policy subcommittee.
But this is all, right, so this is all kind of trying to explicate the law, and I guess that's why I'm bringing it up, because I don't under, I, I think we have to establish where the school improvement team, how it functions in that part of the law, before we then take up the other thing, and I agree, we're not posted for that, but this is all in response to the new, new legislation. And I thought that a part of that was in appoint, no?
So if you go to page two of the policy, what I've identified there, one through five, the main role of the committee...
Yeah, I thought you took this right out of the law.
That's right from, that's right from the law. So hiring, in, in that presentation I made you, made you, you may be thinking of a couple slides that cross over, however, hiring is specifically in the hands of the principal.
Principals.
Okay. And the school improvement team does not have a role in that?
Unless the principal chooses to put them, but they're not defined.
Yeah, I thought you looked at the law, and that's what generated this.
Oh, I thought you were agreeing with that.
I thought I did too, no, me, no, no, I'm, Peter, because I thought I looked at the law too, and, and we, we kind of looked at it to see...
You're like Susan Collins.
Would you like us to, how about?
I don't know.
How about we continue this, because it's only a first reading, and we can have a second and a third, and you can compare it to the law, Jerry?
I'll do that.
Or Peter.
Yeah, I mean, actually, could you just give us the text of the law so we can, I mean, it's not that long.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, just give us the law and then we can look at it for the next, the next reading.
And see if we... I mean, maybe we, you know, we may, will say, okay, I do understand it, and now it seems to conform or...
And then when he, when he sends us that law, put something on the, either the next agenda or the one after for what is the school committee's role? And we can have that discussion.
Yeah.
And since we will, we will be coming back and having another discussion on this, I would like everyone to consider these statements with regard to the formulation of the school improvement teams. I know at the policy subcommittee level, we had some good discussion on this, and I have agreed to, to this language, but I...
But I am concerned about the parent stakeholder groups. Particularly those at the upper grade levels and the level of participation that we will get. I want to make it as easy as possible for them to participate, especially those who, who work jobs. And the, the other concern I have is, you know, the PTOs are going to be picking, right, parent.
I'm not sure.
They're not really picking, the way it's-
Well, if, if there's more parents than what you can deal-
But they just, if I may-
They'll hold an election.
Yeah, so the principal creates a ballot and lets the PTO conduct the election, count the ballots, and then report to the principal who was elected.
Yeah, they're not picking.
But they're not picking, right, thank you.
What happens, I mean, right now, we are blessed with very active PTO groups, but that wasn't always the case. And what happens if our PTO groups, three years from now, decline for whatever reason, and you don't have the PTO groups to, to tap, to perform these duties? Have we, any thought to that?
Or, or do you just-
What's plan B?
Maybe we change it to if more parents are interested than available slots, the principal will-
I forget where, where was that?
You know, conduct an election.
It's right on the first page.
You know, the principal can figure out how to do it, whether it's through PTOs or-
You do an electronic ballot, you send it out.
So maybe just get rid of the specific language and maybe make it to, that, you know, change it to the, not the school's PTO or parent organization, but the principal and/or parent organization will conduct an election, you know? Let's just leave it at that, that, that way, it's, if there isn't one, it falls on the principal.
And, and I think this policy, probably more than any, I'd like us to have it on the calendar for evaluation at the end of the school year to see if there's any changes that you feel should be made at that point, after we've had some time to, to go through it. And I, I realize is, you know, this all doesn't really kick in in earnest until August of this year. So it may be a while, but I, I don't want us to forget that this is a policy that we don't want to just file away and forget about. That this is one that needs to maybe perhaps live and breathe for a little while, until we get it right.
So we'll put it on for a second reading. Peter, you'll send us the language, so we can all just read it and make sure we're comfortable with what the law says and what this language says, and we can, we can have it on a future agenda for a second reading, and we can do a third if we need to.
Well, yeah, we just do it on the next agenda.
Sure.
I also agree with Diane, and maybe we do need to be more specific in terms of the accommodation of parents to be able to make the meetings. I think that's a huge issue.
I feel strongly that they need to be encouraged to participate in their children's schools. And it's, it's incumbent upon us to do whatever we can to facilitate that.
But doesn't that go back to Peter and the principals?
Right.
Making sure that's happening?
We've addressed that.
Not us, we don't, we don't even see anybody.
As us serving the policy.
No, I think we can write policy about it.
Well, what's the policy going to say?
So it says it on page four, second paragraph.
It's going to be that descriptive?
I don't know.
You must hold five meetings a week that are at four forty-five PM, so that, I mean-
If I may, the, the language says the school improvement team shall meet at least eight times during the school year. Meetings will be held outside of school hours. At its first meeting, we put this in bold.
It doesn't mean two thirty.
Well, we said, at, at its first meeting of the school year, the school improvement team will set its calendar of regular meetings for the year.
So if the team says no, we have to meet at seven, then that's when they'll meet.
Exactly.
It's like when we get together as a board, Jerry, you don't dictate when we meet, we decide.
I don't?
No.
You ask us.
You do not.
My concern, and again, as a working parent who doesn't get out of work till, let's say, five o'clock, if I see that these meetings are being planned for two thirty in the afternoon, I'm automatically, okay, I can't do this, and I move on.
Peter's point is they're not being planned for two thirty in the afternoon. It's up to the team to determine when the meetings will be held.
So I think it needs to be, that's a point that then needs to be scrupulously observed, because-
Well, the principals need to communicate that, that it will be up to the team to determine when they will be meeting.
Okay, alright, I, okay.
We could put that in there, you know, the principal, you know, principals should, you know, communicate that it is up to the team to, you know, establish the meeting times and dates. But it does say that.
It builds catch twenty-two in that you send this out to, I'm just kind of, let me play this out kind of in a realistic way. I can imagine two scenarios. You put something out to all the parents, and you say, do you want to volunteer for the school improvement team? The parent, first question the parent's going to ask if they're interested is, when are the meetings? And without knowing that, then they can't really make a meaningful decision about when to, whether or not to participate.
Well, they can attend the first meeting.
And so, another thing is, through oversight, or, you know, I don't know, maybe more nefarious motivation, they, they say, do you want to come and be on the school improvement team, the meetings are at three o'clock on Mondays? You've excluded seventy-five percent of parents or more right there.
Who, who's going to say it's a-
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying-
What time are you having them?
Three o'clock on a Monday.
Yeah.
So, and I'm not saying, you know, I'm saying that they'll, and that's why I'm saying that that particular point has to be observed scrupulously, that-
I think the team has, everybody is told that you could be on the school improvement team, and that that team will determine when the meetings are held, and if you have enough people that show up that want to meet it. I know when I was on the school, school improvement team at the middle school, I'll tell you, they were always held at, held at six.
Okay.
What time were yours?
Six, always.
Mine were after school.
So, you know, it's not like they've always been after school, mine were always at six, so, but I mean, I don't know what else you can do unless you want to prescribe that they should be held after five.
Well, my overall impression is that as a district, we have generally held meetings like that immediately after school, and that excludes most parents.
Agreed. So the only other thing would be to dictate, dictate through policy that we hold them after-
To my point.
-a certain time.
Yeah, yeah.
Which-
And so maybe you need to be that prescriptive, or you need to-
Well, that's my question, is do you really want to be that prescriptive?
Kinda.
I mean, these teams carry a lot of weight and a lot, very important.
But now you may potentially be excluding staff, who are going to go home, I mean-
I know.
I would love to see it alternated, but I, I think that's something that each team, if you have a good principal leading this, is going to make happen. It all, it all goes back to your administrators that are leading these meetings. It's up to them to make sure that everybody is accommodated and that they do it in a way, that they alternate, or they, because, you know, if we start saying this time, now, okay, you've accommodated parents, but what about all the staff that have families they have to get home to and dinner, and, you know, so, so if you leave it up to the principal and the team, hopefully, they're trying to find a middle ground that accommodates everybody, and if you start being really prescriptive, now you've taken that out of their hand.
I, I don't disagree that you can really, you know, to the points before, you can really hang yourself with the policy if you get too specific or you build requirements that you subsequently find you don't really want to live up to.
And it all comes back to, we hired Peter Sanquioni. Dr. Sanquioni understands how we want these school improvement teams run. Are they being run that way, Dr. Sanquioni?
Well, that's, that's the other question. Will there be, and then we have, we don't have it in the policy, will there be any reporting into the school committee on the success of these teams?
It's in the policy, talks about the school improvement team plan has to be approved by you.
Close to you, does it come to us?
I think it says by you.
But, and, you know, it does get to the point of, we're taken out of this, the only, and, you know, again, we're elected to give oversight.
No, I agree.
You know, this is not, this is not a, you know, oh, I want to still keep our fingers in the, in the pie. It's, this is, you know, the only way we really do give oversight is through writing policy, and I think that's actually, you know, a good way of trying to approach governance. And we can always rewrite policy, but you want to write it right the first time, so you don't have to rewrite it, and so you are successful in what you're endeavoring to accomplish.
The superintendent shall verify copies of the materials to the members of the school committee upon request.
And, uh, on the school improvement plan, it says that the, the school improvement team shall submit for approval to the superintendent and review of the school committee. So you may recall, every fall, I have them come and present their school improvement plans, that will just, you have the ability to review these plans, and you will.
Okay.
And I think that was the whole point of the law, is for school committees really to put more accountability on the person they're hiring, which is the superintendent. Right, policy and making sure, like, we, we're pretty clear on how we want these school improvement teams to-
Well, I think most importantly, it's to put the hands of education in the educators.
Well, yeah.
It, it's, it's not our jobs to actually do the educating, and we want to, we need to have trust in our educators.
Yeah, there's certain things that we have responsibility for, budget, policy.
And oversight.
Yeah, you know.
Okay.
So everybody, you'll send us the law, we'll all take a look at it, and we'll, we'll look at, we'll bring it back.
For discussion.
Don't you wish we had just permanently skipped them?
No.
No. Got to, got to address it.
Got to attack them.
Alright, what is C, remove Article Six, job description?
So-
What is that?
Dr. Sanquioni has recommended that we remove section, the six-
The six hundred.
The six hundred. Which is the job descriptions.
It's not really policy.
Oh.
And, and while I agree that it isn't policy, and we should have a goal of removing it from the manual, I also recognize, is there a, anywhere else where staff can see these online, these job descriptions? Is there a personnel handbook that they can read these in at this point?
There is a HR manual, I'm not sure I would put it there, but I do agree that most districts have them online, it's a key recruiting tool, you put them out there. But as you also observe, many of these are outdated, so I'm not putting these online until we get them all revised by the people who serve in these positions now, I think we need to work with our staff.
And what would the timeline on something like that be? Because I, I know it's not in your goals for this year.
Get back to you on that, how's that?
So you want to remove it as policy, but still have it?
No, I think Diane's saying she wants to hold on.
I want it to stay there until we have a good handle on-
Right.
-when we will have updated job descriptions.
But the goal, but, alright, but the goal is-
The goal is to get rid of it eventually.
And, and then, but write job descriptions that are not part of policy, but are available. That seems reasonable.
I mean, certainly, they've been there forever, so they're probably not hurting anything, so.
Sounds like something to do over the summer. I like you thinking. Maybe by September.
So, so we won't even bring this back, we're just going to leave it until we have something to replace it when we pull it off? Yes?
Yes.
Sounds okay to me.
I think it gives us the, uh, twelve D.
Alright, we are on twelve. No, we're on ten.
It's a late meeting for us, I'm just saying.
You are, yeah, twelve D, table, twelve D.
We're usually out here an hour and a half.
We're on ten D, which I think we're tabling.
Thank you.
Ten D?
Yes, right?
Yes, thank you.
Tabling?
We'll bring that back.
So, Sue's not here.
I have that, Mrs. Chairman, I have the, the request from Miss Craven, she couldn't make it this evening, but I'd like to ask your approval of this.
What is it?
We would be on ten E, request approval of the Feinstein donation, again, Miss Craven, so I ask- So I ask for your, to accept a grant from the Feinstein Foundation, Foundation with gratitude, the grant is to, has been awarded to Tiverton Middle School for four thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion in a second.
And will support the implementation of the Positive Behavior Intervention Supports Program. I want to commend principals, Craven and her staff for the hard work in bringing in such a worthy program.
So the motion in a second?
They got four instead of two.
Yep, we have it.
They doubled it.
Yeah, in favor.
Any questions? All those in favor? Okay, thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Craven. Item ten F, so this was a request by Mrs. Ockery from the Budget Committee to, it was sort of to Dr. Sanquioni and me to have an opportunity for the Budget Committee, now, she was making this as an individual, but I think her implication was she would like it to be available to all the Budget Committee to meet with a group of teachers, just to hear their perspective. Of course, I think, understanding that the teachers, while of course are partners and, and able to offer important insight, don't have budgetary responsibility or the priorities of setting the budget, or the responsibility of setting the budget. I think Dr. Sanquioni could have done this on his own authority, but since she had asked me, I wanted to bring it back to the committee. As well, I asked Mrs. Holland back to poll her members.
Yeah, I was going to say, first order of business is the Budget Committee want the-
Yes, so to, to ask them, but in the interest of, you know, kind of time and facilitating this or not, and, and transparency, I sort of set it on as a, as a agenda item. So, and, you know, even if the rest of the Budget Committee does, we have to decide how do we respond to an individual, if the Budget Committee as a whole does not make such a request.
Well, should we wait until we know whether it's an individual request or a Budget Committee request? Should we continue it until we know? Because if her intent was to have the whole Budget Committee, that's a different meeting than an individual.
I think that was clearly her intent, I don't-
The whole Budget Committee?
Yeah.
Well, then, why don't we continue it until they take a motion on whether they want to do it or not? Because as we all know, no single individual represents the board.
No, that's true. First thing you learn in one oh one.
First thing we learn, school committee.
One oh one.
I will ask, I will let you know when, if they give me a response then.
Okay. And then if she decides, if they say no, and she decides differently, then, then we'll have a different topic, or a different agenda item.
Okay.
Perfect.
Uh, and then the municipal budget submission, I thought that was sent to all of us, I just realized it was only sent to Dr. Sanquioni and I, it was from Mr. Reitzman.
That's the one you forwarded today, Jerry?
So we forwarded, I forwarded to you guys, we can continue this to the next meeting. It was really just an FYI, if anybody wanted to-
Should that have been just included in correspondence?
It could have been, but I didn't forward it to you, because I thought, I thought it had gone to everybody, but it only went to me.
As long as we're all aware that, that that's his budget recommendation, the town council hasn't even started talking about it.
Yeah.
So, so, but anyway, we can-
But yeah, correspondence, that would have been a good-
It's, you know, really was just an opportunity to-
But now we have it.
Right, so now you have it.
Okay.
Alright.
February eleventh?
We are on item twelve, announcement scheduled meetings and reports. Oh, so first thing about that, we had tentatively scheduled to have the school visitation by the Budget Committee this Saturday, but there's a statewide school committee meeting, so I informed that, that we would not make that. I was thinking that the next most likely date is February sixth. If people can make that, that's two weeks from this Saturday?
It's February eighth, and I cannot.
Yeah, it's February Saturday.
Alright, you can't make the eighth.
Do you care if they have it anyway?
I didn't care if we had it this week.
So that's fine, go ahead.
Well, they don't need us, they, they have Mike, they have-
Yeah, as long as there's representatives from the district, I'm okay not being there, I can't speak for anybody else.
Alright.
Sally and Elaine, if you want to be there, then schedule it on a date that you can be there.
Alright.
I'll try to be there on the sixth, well, I'll see.
The eighth.
Whatever it is.
Eight or six.
It's the eighth, I know, because I have to work that day.
It's February eighth, it's a Saturday, yeah.
Does that work for you guys, Mike, Peter?
Nine o'clockish, nine o'clockish.
I think they set them for ten.
We had said ten, but, uh, yeah.
Ten, I don't know.
Soon is the better.
I'll check my calendar and see.
Okay.
And we'll see what they say.
Yeah, because they had to coordinate with their group.
I gave her that date, hey, is the eighth, huh? God knows what I said to her in the email then.
Can I say something?
Maybe they'll want to do it Thursday, the sixth?
At night.
We'll wait for you to confirm.
Even better, yeah.
Tentatively the sixth.
Eighth.
Eighth, I'm sorry, the eighth, yes, got it.
It's snowing. It's not going to snow till tomorrow.
Be interesting to see who's here on the sixth.
We had- We a couple weeks ago had a presentation from you, Dr. Sanquioni, on strategic planning. Should we have it maybe perhaps as a reminder that we need to go back and revisit that? As a topic? Or do you want to just hold off indefinitely? What's the plan?
I think it would be, if you recall, my timeline was to begin the process this coming summer, so maybe it's prudent I bring it back to you at our last meeting in June, so remind you what we'll start to do.
Our only meeting in June?
Our only meeting in June.
We can have more if we need them.
Okay.
Alright.
So, we're up at February eleventh? Are we on February eleventh?
I don't know, I have to steal the agenda back. I don't know, I have to steal the agenda back. Okay, anything else about meetings?
So February 11th, we're going to have special ed capital, but we also are going to invite all those people for special ed. All right. So I guess if anything, if it gets busy, we can always just, if it gets late or the discussion goes longer, we can always continue things.
Yeah. Nothing beyond that is, is time-sensitive.
Okay.
And I'm having a health and wellness meeting, remember Dr. Locken that night?
On the 11th.
Okay.
5:30.
Oh, that's what that's for? Sally, is that your meeting?
5:30, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And...
I would appreciate we start no earlier than 7:00 on the 11th.
Yep.
Yeah.
I, I can't generally start at 6:00.
That's what he said. I just didn't want him to start at 6:00 if I had a meeting at 5:30.
Yeah. I mean, some, there's some...
Are we going to need a budget meeting before the 25th? I mean, when are we going to the Budget Committee?
25th.
25th, I mean, when are we going to, we have a lot of, we have 800 and...
27th.
27.
27th.
So, thank you.
So, so do you want to just present the high level that you have for now, Peter? I, I mean, what do, I mean, because when are we going to start talking about deficits over that cap?
Well, I think that's, the deficit, I think that work stays here. As far as what we go after the Budget Committee, we just want the 4% with them. So I think the presentation I have, trying to convince them...
Is fine.
Yeah.
I mean, that's our only work with them, right?
Right, but we have some work getting to, we have a lot of work getting to what we're going to have to cut.
And our final submission isn't due till March 14th, I think it is?
Right.
So that we do have a little additional time there.
With, with them, but I'm, I'm more thinking of the work we have to do.
See, it's two different paths, right? Our submission hopefully is that 4% budget, nice and clean, yep, take it, and then we've got...
And then we have work to do.
It's our work that I'm concerned about.
It can go right all the way to May.
So you don't think we need another meeting right now?
Not for the Bu- Budget Committee, but again, we, we have the 11th and the 25th.
Yeah.
I can continue to refine and change it.
And I think we do need to iron out this 4% question before then.
Which one it is, yeah.
And then, uh, didn't we have to have the high school handbook come back?
It's not time-sensitive. I mean, it's on there. The National Honor Society is the handbook.
But that's not going to start until next year. I mean, they've already done this year.
It's the spring, isn't it?
Oh, I thought, I thought there were two different things. We still hadn't, we hadn't approved the handbook yet.
No, you haven't, right.
Oh.
Okay. So what was National Honor Society, the only thing that was pending? I think it was probably...
It was the one that generated the most questions with you, and you wanted some answers to that.
He was going to do that.
He is, so I, I mean, if you're feeling that the 11th's getting...
But I see what you're saying. It's not time-sensitive, so we could have it on the 25th, if we need to.
Absolutely. You could do that in March or April, I mean, it's not, doesn't come back till next fall.
Yeah, okay.
Well, when do they notify them? In the spring? I, I mean, I don't...
No, it's right at the beginning of the school year, I thought.
Beginning of the school year.
It's beginning of the school year?
Yeah, because they wait for final grades.
Okay.
They're not doing a spring induction of juniors, I guess? All right. Uh, all right. Yeah?
Yep.
But is it important, Peter, for like juniors to know if we're still going to keep doing juniors?
Yeah, I think, sure.
Okay, so, so...
We, we'll get it in the next few weeks.
Yeah, and not e, it could be late March, early April. It's just, you know, so that we kind of do have it ironed out, you know? I mean, because now they're in the middle of, you know, I don't think they're going to change their grade habits because of that one way or the other, so...